All right. Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council, November 16th, 2022, little after six o'clock. Of course, we're here at City Council Chambers of 345 High Street in Hamilton. Roll call, please.
Mohler.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, we're going to start off by offering a prayer. Councilmember Joel Lauer, please stand if you are able.
Lord, as we enter the holiday season, let us count all of our blessings and all of our good fortunes that have been bestowed on us. Also allow us to remember those who are in need, including those who we may not, who we may have lost touch with over the years and give us, give us the ability to reach out and possibly touch base with some of these people during the holiday season.
Let's believe this to the Father, with the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have two presentations this evening. The first one is the Hamilton Equity Plan by Human Resources Director Jean Pope.
A lot of feedback.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, citizens and friends. Thank you so much for allowing us this time tonight. We are going to give you some information about how we want to move forward as an equitable institution. I'd like to introduce my cohort, Ms. Sophia Williams. She is a junior at Baden High School and subsequently has done a lot of the research and work for us in order for us to move forward in this vein. So, thank you very much.
The focus of the equity plan is to reaffirm and formalize our commitment to the principle of equal employment opportunities. The city's strategic success will come from following the equity plan and the intentional objectives within. Where the city is current, where the cities currently will be referenced on Slide Six. From our experience with CHIPS, my fellow interns and I were able to connect with many leaders in our community. During an interview, Dr. Benny's Hamilton said, "An equity plan is an effective way to be intentional about diversifying an organization. When done right, it creates opportunities for those who would otherwise be overlooked, based on bias, conscious or unconscious. Diversity within the workplace provides fresh perspectives and creativity." And although I'm not in this photo, I'm proud to be part of the City of Hamilton Women of Excellence.
In reference to the demographics for the City of Hamilton, we have held steady at a plateau of 5% regarding our ethnic diversity or makeup of the census. In reference to women, women's placement here in the City of Hamilton, we've held steady for the last four years at 19%. There are figures in the full equity plan that shows if we want to really and truly mirror what our city looks like, we should be at 11% and 49%, respectively. So minority involvement and then women involvement. And I think the City of Hamilton is making strides in getting there. We do not certainly have a magic bullet, but we do have some very hardworking individuals that believe in making the City of Hamilton a center of excellence, and that's what we're going to be striving to be. Right now, we have 761 for the year 2022. We have 761 employees. And we have increased our percentage from 5% over the last four years to 6% in reference to our ethnic diversity. So it's a small step, but it is a step nonetheless. And we've increased our, the, the women from 19% to 21%. So we are making strides. We are looking at achieving a 1% increase or goal setting over the next three years. We'd like to see that. I think if we can continue making small incremental steps, we will be well on our way. Our success strategy is to be the thermostat and not the thermometer. Some of our success strategies will be including data analysis. We want to continue to measure what we have incoming as far as employees and why potentially they are leaving, how we are retaining good talent, promoting good talent, giving them avenues for career advancement and successes. So we want to continue again to analyze the data. We want to educate. Part of our education in reference to DEIB or diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging is having ourselves be open and welcoming to understand how we can create a more equitable society. So we are looking at different ways to educate ourselves, potentially looking at outside educators, resources, and then of course, some from within. We'll have more information on that once we put that complete plan together. Organizational input, there's no better way to take the temperature of an organization by asking than by asking people who actually work at the organization. We have had several implementations of our exit surveys. They will now be going out electronically as soon as someone resigns, and we hope we don't have many of those, but there was a lot of natural attrition in 2020 and 2021 just due to COVID. But we'd like to know, what are we doing well? What do we need to do better at? Where are our opportunities? So that, those are some of the things that the exit surveys will reveal. To date, they've been a little sporadic, and we're hoping for them to be consistent and stabilized incoming, providing good information. We want to create employee resource groups and affinity groups for women and minorities here. So one of the things that we do have already implemented is the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. And that is taking the temperature internally and externally of our potential employees and our current employees and trying to provide solutions or ways to collaborate with the resources that we already have here present in the city. There's no reason for us to reinvent the wheel if we don't have to. And there are plenty of amazing qualified people that will help us get to our diversity goals right here in the City of Hamilton. So we definitely want to encourage seeking out those individuals. Community outreach, we have, again, several, several institutions. We have our CHIPS organization. We have Seventeen Strong, which is tapped in. We have the YWCA Hamilton. We have Residential Services. They are out in the community every single day, and they're a way for us to really take the temperature or gauge what people are seeing, hearing, and what they're needing. And so we want to be, we want to listen and hopefully create some strategies based on the information that we're receiving. And last but not least, hopefully with implementing all of these strategies, we will become the center of excellence that we choose to be. And that is my presentation for this evening. Does anyone have any questions?
Please.
Jean?
Yes.
From your experience and when job applications are open, are you seeing a higher rate of women applicants and, and filling that need of ethnicities and diversities and things? Are you seeing a greater uptick this, this past couple of years since the initiatives have been put into place, young ladies like Sophia and people that wish to join early on, even in high school levels and then collegiate career opportunities that we offer? Are you seeing an uptick in those applications?
We are, and specifically, let me point to our civil service testing for the fire department. As you all know, the fire department changed some of the certification requirements, and that led to a windfall of individuals. We had, in the past previous three quarters, we had a total of 30 applicants of color. In the one or the last rendition of the exam, we had 50. You know, yes. And so now it just becomes, how do we convert the numbers of interested and qualified or eligible applicants into employees? So to answer your question, sir, yes, we are seeing an uptick. And I'm, I'm happy to report that, you know, again, we have seen an increase of women and minorities. It, it may be a small number, but we have seen an increase, and so we're just going to move forward and, you know, be dogged in our mission.
Good, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? I, I really view the importance of employee retention that you kind of mentioned, education, organizational input, and just flat out listening to each other.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We want to be creative. We have to think outside the box. We want to renew our resources as far as employees go. And so some of the traditional methods don't work or present a draw as well as they did, you know, previously. So we are reaching out and having conversations and collaborations with Miami Regionals for, you know, potential academic career advancement through education through them. They have a couple of different new programs, micro credentialing and the WorkPlus program. We also have, you know, our CHIPS program that has given us two employees already that are full-time, one in human resources and the other one in IT. You know, so we are reaping the benefits of the creativity that we've, that we've shown thus far, so.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Jean.
You're welcome. Thank you all for your support. Appreciate it.
We next have Rich Angle, the Train Depot Relocation Update.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. We had a coordination meeting yesterday with the Lithgow Restoration, who is responsible for the construction of the foundations, as well as their providing the mason, who will be installing the concrete units between the top of the existing, or the new foundation and the bottom of the, of the structure, as well as with Wolf House Movers. And I think we've got a fairly firm schedule that we can talk about tonight. For the two-story building, Wolf House Movers is mobilizing December 5. It'll take them a couple of days to, to prepare the walls, to accept the lifting steel. We're going to coordinate the mason with that effort so that we salvage as much of the existing brick as possible from the wall. Next, the next three days, they'll be installing the steel supports and cribbing. They'll be installing the jacking system and lifting the building after that, and then installing the dolly system and moving the building to the new location, probably the week of the, be the week of the 13th, or the week of the 12th, sometime later in that week. Now, this is all tentative, based on weather conditions and other variables that might come into play during this time period. But it looks likely that we will have the first building moved and set over the existing foundation, the new foundation before Christmas. I asked them how long we're going to have to close Martin Luther King during this move, and they said, well, they'd like it at least three hours. I said, well, we can give them probably four to six if they need it, but we will certainly have it prepared and ready for the move at that time. And then the second-story building, I'm sorry, the single-story building, this is also tentative. They will probably start the week between Christmas and New Year, although I need to confirm that with Wolf House Movers. I don't have that as a firm date yet. If they take that week off, everything's going to get shifted by a few days. But it appears that they will have that building moved by, before the end of January. So at this point, that's the latest information I have. Are there any questions?
Rich, can you send that proposed timeline to all of Council?
Yes, sir. First thing in the morning.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now go to Audience of Citizens. Individuals who wish to make comments may do so during this part of the agenda or may reserve the right to speak when that item is up for vote on the council floor. All individuals who wish to speak are required to sign this Audience of Citizens book. We have one person who signed. Each speaker's allowed up to five minutes. We've got Dan Hancock. Good evening, Dan.
Hi, good evening, good evening, Council. My name's Dan Hancock, and I live in Hamilton, Ohio. And we'd like to know, is Gray Street and Gordon Street going to be paved this year or not? Like I said, they got ready to be paved, but are they going to pave it this year or not? Are they going to have to wait until next year to pave it? The other thing is, Monday, I attended a special meeting that I was invited to by the North End Community Neighborhood Group. And since I was invited, I invited one of the council members, Eric Pullman, with me. And we had a very productive meeting about the North Hamilton Crossing and how the route would go, because almost every citizen that was there does not want their hair, their house torn down because they've lived there all their lives and the houses are paid off and that. But they would like to get with the council there and, and go over it with you guys. And the other part of it is, is that they also have a lot of other issues in that neighborhood, and they feel like the council is not listening to them and that. And we invited them to, to come before council and bring the issue to you guys, so you know what the, all the problems are that they're having over there. And the head of the organization is Alicia Bowman. She's the head of the group, and she will be attending one of the meetings here soon and that. And the other thing is, is I applaud Rich for the streets that he's got paved already and that and done. They look very nice, and they did a good job on it and that. And everybody in my neighborhood is proud and glad it's done, and it looks beautiful. So, other than that, I thank council and that, and I hope you guys have a happy Thanksgiving. I just ate my Thanksgiving dinner at church before I came here. So you guys have a good evening there, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dan. The North, I think there's a public meeting involving North Hamilton Crossing in January of 2023, and I think this is mid-January. I can't think of the exact date.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, okay? Thanks for the compliment, for the streets being paved. I'm sure those here who were involved in that will take that back to others who have been greatly involved in getting the streets paved. Gordon and Ray, I can't answer that question.
Mr. Mayor, we think it's going to be done this week, but we're waiting on the final schedule from the contractors.
Okay. I think that takes care of your answer then. Is that right, Dan?
Please.
This week, possibly, depending upon the contractor, Gordon and Ray could be paved.
That'd be great. With all of them. They have me suck up. They got really nice, like they did the other street. I appreciate that.
It's probably weather permitting, contractors' timeline permitting, so it's, it's on their calendar.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, next we go to the consent agenda. That includes all matters such as staff reports and caucus reports. We're going to go to the Committee of the Whole, which gives us City Council opportunity to listen, ask questions, provide direction, comment on the reports, upset the motion, let the regular meeting be recessed, and the Committee of the Whole take place.
So moved.
Second. Much my councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:22. Okay, the caucus agenda, you want to lead us through that?
Sure. Absolutely. So for the caucus agenda during the Committee of the Whole tonight, we'll have, start with presentations for items number one and three, which are planning department-related items, which will be presented by our Planning Director, Ms. Liz Hayden.
Good evening, City Council and residents of Hamilton. Thank you.
Just a little bit.
Sorry. What did I do? Okay, the first item that we have coming to you tonight is for KNR landscaping. They had an active conditional use from 2017, but they needed to update it due to some expansions that they've incurred. So the updated conditional use that Planning Commission heard and made a recommendation to approve to City Council was included in new areas of outside storage, a covered salt bin, and covered plant storage. The updated site plan required two waivers, which is an accessory structure over 15 feet, which is the salt dome that you already see on site, and to allow exterior storage in a side yard, which is, they have a large grassy area that is next to the house at, I'm blanking on the address, but it's not the intersection. It's as far away from the intersection. That's the area that they're proposing to have covered storage of trees and shrubs.
The westernmost part of the site.
Thank you. And they said maximum eight feet. Any questions about this one?
Any questions?
No.
I just have a, just a short comment. Liz, Tom and I went out, met with them several months ago, talked through some of these issues. As Liz said, that they had an existing conditional use permit that was issued several years ago. As they expanded, the, the conditional use permit needed to have amended language to it. I, I felt, just in seeing it firsthand, that it was a solid operation, and they just needed to clean up the conditional use permit. From a staff perspective, Liz, I mean, unless you have anything I'm not aware of, I mean, I think staff supports.
Yeah, they've been good to work with, and it's, you know, part of the, part of the requirement is that they need to install landscaping outside of their fencing, which I think will be a really nice addition to Maple Avenue, to have that landscaping.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Liz, thank you and your team for all the work, and everyone going over. That gentleman came to council recently, so I appreciate the attention that you've given him. The backup that we had in our packets was very telling about what you shared with us tonight, but in the pictorial and things like that. So again, thanks for all the work going into this person who invested in Maple Avenue, saw an opportunity for his landscaping company, and I'm glad they're growing rather than recessing. It's, it's an opportunity that they have, and I'm glad they came to you, came to us for the expansion that they'd like to do.
Yes, it does seem like they're really thriving.
Yes.
Great. Okay, are we doing another one, I guess?
One more.
Three?
Imlee Avenue, street vacation proposal. This is on Route Four, and you wouldn't know this was a street. So again, what we call kind of a paper street. It looks like it's part of a piece of private property, and it's just south of the Rowleys. And this is the site of the proposed fire station, and we are requesting to vacate it for that project. Any questions on this one?
Yeah, quick question. For one, I guess two and three, if council does concur with the conditional use permit and the other actions, it doesn't come back to us again, does it?
Street vacation moves continues to move forward through the regular process.
So three will keep moving forward then?
And the street dedication also will need to move forward.
Number two?
Just the conditional use that ends.
Okay, all right. Any questions? Thank you.
So next up for item number two, which is related to a dedication plot for Hensley Avenue, our Director of Engineering, Rich Angle, will be leading that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. This is at the intersection of Hensley and Hancock by the Crawford Wood School. The red outline is the outline of the parcel as it exists today, and we simply want to take a piece of that parcel shown in yellow and remove it from the parcel and dedicate it as street right-of-way. Are there any questions about this request? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have two reports for items four and five by our Finance Director, Dave Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, citizens of Hamilton. The first was just a verbal report. It's a housekeeping item on the real estate tax advances. We do this every fall. What it does is allow us to get real estate tax advances by the county auditor. The real estate tax advances come in, in February and, and August. The settlements come in March and September. The advances run about $600,000 each. Prior to this year, interest rates were below 1%, so it wasn't that big of a deal. I looked today, Star Ohio, which is a state treasurer money market, was paying 3.7%. So it allows us to maximize some interest earnings. Any questions on that one?
Thank you.
So the slide on the screen is the next caucus report, which is a 3% increase for Schedule A employees. Schedule A employees are all non-union employees excluding the city manager.
I'm in a union.
The, the big change I want to point out, though, is on your actual written caucus report, it says it is effective January 14th. That would be a pay period in January, so it would not hit anybody's checks until February. We're going to change that. It's going to be effective December 17th pay period. That'll make it on the first pay in 2020, in 2023, which is January 6th, and that completely aligns with the budget. You can see the, the breakdown of the costs up there on the screen. That's the annual breakdown. Any questions on that one?
Questions? Thank you.
So next up for item number six, which is related to our 2023 annual budget. At this caucus report, we're still early on with our Finance Committee meeting discussions, as well as having a public hearing on December 7th. So this caucus report may seem a little preliminary, but we want to let council know that there will be a more in-depth presentation on December 7th. And if you have any questions, reach out to Joshua or Dave, not me.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, not unlike prior years, I will offer up to special groups that if they have an interest in hearing more specific details, once we get to the Finance Committees about the actual budget. So the budget public hearing that will be held on December 7th, where you'll hear the entire budget presentation, before the budget is finalized, I'm, I'm happy to go out and speak to whatever groups that may have an interest. In the past, it's usually not a formal group. Usually it's just more individual questions that I field, but I will make sure that's offered up and available.
Great. That's, that's great to hear. That's being very responsive to questions our citizens may have. Okay.
Anything else with that item, Mayor? Okay. Then our last item on our caucus agenda, which is related to our supervisory control -- Then our last item on our caucus agenda, which is related to our supervisory control and data acquisition system, will be presented by our director of public works, Jim Williams.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, and citizens. Tonight, I'm asking, I'm sorry, thank you. I'm asking as part of the Department of Infrastructure, requesting that we utilize Section 171.06 of the codified ordinances in order to allow the wavering of advertising for sole source supplier for upgrades to our supervisory control and data acquisition SCADA system. This is basically a way that we can remotely monitor our gas distribution system and respond more readily to it. ATR is a company that we've been working with for probably the past six and a half years. We've been bench testing this equipment. We're asking to, basically, your permission to allow us to utilize ATR to provide these components that you see in cabinets that we'll install in our gas regulator pits throughout the city. Now, this project's been going on for an extensively long time. My goal is to finish this project in 2023, and primarily because we're running the bandwidth with some of our technical support capacity, as well as there's changes coming from a technology standpoint that we need to have this system in place, so therefore, we should have a robust system for the next five to 10 years. And that's why we're trying to expedite the procurement of the components inside these cabinets and throughout the city. So, with that said, we've got, like I said, fifty-eight installed, not installed, but fifty-eight pits to deal with. We have twenty left to install, and that's the goal for this year in 2023, is to complete that completely. This is a proprietary system, so I couldn't really give you some of the details associated with that, since this is a public meeting. It is the state of the art as far as our ability to see, respond, and actually control some of the systems throughout our gas distribution. And so, I just wanted you to know that, that I couldn't provide a lot of the detail. If you need to see that, we can definitely provide that to you on another platform, but it is treated with the utmost secrecy.
Questions? Did I say it was going to be installed by our city people?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Our electric department, as well as our gas regulator technicians that work for me, will basically complete this system installation.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'll set the motion, the committee of the whole be closed.
So moved.
Second. Motion by council member Nab, second by council member Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at six thirty-four. I'll accept the motion, the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second. Motion by council member Fear, second by vice mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Okay, the regular meeting is reconvened at six thirty-four, and I'll set the motion regarding the reports and concurrence.
Mayor?
Council member Fear?
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council has furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Back up a second, I think we have to receive the reports of the consent agenda and concur in their recommendations.
Yeah, that too.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by council member Fear.
Waiting for that.
On that motion, seconded by council member Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items, and I'll accept the motion on that one.
Again?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council has furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by council member Fear, second by council member Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried, we go to pending legislation, agenda item number eight, second reading of emergency ordinance involving paid time off.
An emergency ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Chapter 181 Employee Fringe Benefits to allow certain employees the opportunity to opt into the paid time off PTO accrual system, second reading.
Okay, now, agenda item number eight. Is there a motion regarding that particular agenda item?
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by council member Vaughn, second by vice mayor Ryan. Any discussion on this emergency ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
We now go to new legislation, and it's agenda item number nine, perishing of an ordinance involving 1905 Section Housing and Property Maintenance.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 1905 Administration and Enforcement of the Codified Ordances of the City of Hamilton to amend at Section 1905.99 Penalty to revise the penalty language, first reading.
Go to agenda item number ten, perishing ordinance involving grading and drainage legislation.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 1913 Environmental Requirements to the Codified Ordances of the City of Hamilton by adding a new section, 1913.27, grading and drainage relative to prevention of soil erosion and accumulation of stagnant water, first reading.
Want to say about those two, nine and ten, those went through ordinance review commission. I know there's been a lot of good work put into both of those particular, there's good work in all of them, but those two, I know we've had a chance to see and listen and hear from our city professionals about them. Okay, we go to number eleven, perishing emergency ordinance involving assigning part of our interest in Fremont Power Sales Contract.
An emergency ordinance approving the assignment of portions of the City of Hamilton's interest in the Fremont Power Sales Contract with American Municipal Power Incorporated to the Village of Edgerton, City of Marshall, City of Orville, Village of New Knoxville, City of Painesville, Village of Delshere, and taking other actions in connection therewith, first reading.
Yes, first reading of emergency ordinance, we go to agenda item number twelve, which is first reading of an ordinance vacating a couple of alleys, portions of a couple of alleys.
An ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-way named South Second Street Alley located directly west of 122 Chestnut Street and described as a portion of South Second Street Alley located south of Pershing Avenue Alley, north of Chestnut Street, and east of South Front Street, and another alley named South Second Street Alley B located directly west of 123 Pershing Avenue, and described as a portion of South Second Street Alley B located north of Pershing Avenue Alley, south of Pershing Avenue, and east of South Front Street situated in the Second Ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number thirteen, two readings of emergency ordinance involving a base contract for sale and purchase, excuse me, of natural gas.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and ratifying the execution of an asset management agreement between the City of Hamilton, Ohio and Constellation New Energy Gas Division, LLC, related to the base contract for sale and purchase of natural glass, excuse me, gas, and an associated transaction confirmation, first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Pullman?
Make a motion that the rules be suspended, the said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Motion by council member Pullman, second by vice mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
We now ready for the second reading of the emergency ordinance?
An emergency ordinance authorizing and ratifying the execution of the asset management agreement between the City of Hamilton, Ohio and Constellation New Energy Gas Division, LLC, related to the base contract for sale and purchase of natural gas and an associated transaction confirmation, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Pullman?
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by council member Pullman, second by vice mayor Ryan. Any questions, discussion, comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
We now go to agenda item number fourteen, two readings of emergency ordinance involving the CIC.
An emergency ordinance affirming the designation of the Community Improvement Corporation, CIC, of Hamilton, Ohio, as the city's agency for development in the city and authorizing a grant in the amount not to exceed $1,120,000 to be made to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, for public purposes and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Nab?
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
By council member Nab, second by council member Fear. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Second reading of the emergency ordinance?
An emergency ordinance affirming the designation of the Community Improvement Corporation, CIC, of Hamilton, Ohio, as the city's agency for development in the city and authorizing a grant in the amount, in the amount not to exceed $1,120,000 to be made to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, for public purposes and declaring an emergency, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Nab?
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by council member Nab, second by council member Fear. Discussion on this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Could we have an explanation on that, like what's this to be used for, please?
Yes. So, the grant to the CIC is for actually three separate things. $600,000 of that 1.12 million will actually be a loan to the Vision Realty Group that is doing the Hilton Project for interior demolition, so they can start on that as they wait for their historic tax credits, but it is a loan that has to be repaid. So that's $600,000 of the 1.12 million, and there's two separate real estate transactions that are still being negotiated through the CIC that, I think one of them is very close to being complete, the other one is still somewhat of a question mark. One of them is on North Third Street, and one of them is on Gordon Avenue. And the Gordon Avenue also, there was money set aside for demolition for that purchase also.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
We go to agenda item number fifteen, two readings of emergency ordinance involving a property exchange agreement.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an amended property exchange agreement between the City of Hamilton and CB Properties of Hamilton, LLC, as it relates to city-owned property located along the 1,000 block of North Third Street in exchange for CB Properties of Hamilton, LLC, property owned, property located along the 1,000 block of Maple Avenue, first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Pullman?
Make a motion that the rules be suspended, the said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Motion by council member Pullman, second by vice mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an amended property exchange agreement between the City of Hamilton and CB Properties of Hamilton, LLC, as it relates to city-owned property located along the 1,000 block of North Third Street in exchange for CB Properties of Hamilton, LLC-owned property located along the 1,000 block of Maple Avenue, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Pullman?
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by council member Pullman, second by vice mayor Ryan. Comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
We now go to agenda item number sixteen, resolution involving a road salt agreement with the city schools.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement for the sale of road salt to the Hamilton City School District for the 2022, 2023 winter season.
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Vaughn?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by council member Vaughn, second by council member Lauer. Any discussion or comments on this one? None, roll call vote.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer? Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Okay, audience in the city may enter.
Thank you, mayor. A reminder that the public hearing for the budget will be held at the council meeting in this chambers on December seventh, and that budget public hearing presentation will be placed on the city website, hopefully the Friday before that, so people have an opportunity to read through it prior to the actual public hearing, and then the second reading of that will be held on December fourteenth. We always reserve that last Wednesday before Christmas as an emergency for a council meeting on this 21st, in case, you know, questions arise or we need to move the budget, final reading to that later date. Just want to say that Cindy Hogg is now our acting health director since Kay's retirement. Cindy's with us tonight, Cindy, if you don't mind standing, so I think most, everyone on council knows Cindy, but just want to make sure, so welcome Cindy. And it's good to see Ed Wilson in the crowd tonight, but Ed actually predates even myself, an old timer like myself at the City of Hamilton that was here before I was, but one of our star members of our planning department. Thank you.
Audience and council.
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Pullman?
I have two things, actually. First of all, just so the public knows that we do not have any more meetings for the rest of November, correct? And we will have two meetings in December, December seventh and fourteenth, back-to-back, and then we're done for the year, right? Because I know Dan and I had a conversation about that, so you almost missed tonight, Dan. And back to Dan. Dan, first of all, I want to thank you for inviting me to the meeting at the North End at the Dream Center. Started off a little bit rough, in my opinion. We had a pretty good crowd there. We talked about North Hamilton Crossing, their concern is about coming through the neighborhood, and there were some rumors that needed to be dispelled, and I was happy to stand up and tell them what I knew about it, and that, please don't listen to the rumors that are out there, and, you know, there are different phases of this, and I think they're meeting, Alicia's meeting with the city on this too, and the neighbors had a lot of concern, and their concern was that the council doesn't care about the North End. That was one of their concerns, and that they were just little people out there, and as a, you know, as I told them, I said, that's not true. Everybody has an opinion. Everybody here, it doesn't matter if you have a million dollars, or if you have one penny, you are a citizen of this city, and the city council has voted up here to watch over our citizens. They have an opinion, they can come here to council, give their five minutes and speak. It doesn't matter who you are, you're a citizen, you have that right, and we made that very clear. clear. And the other thing is, I think there's, the North End thinks that there's just a little bit of a flicker of a left in the light bulb there, and that, and they're really worried about their community, but the thing is, there's people there that showed up that know there's still a bright light in the North End, and it's just like a relationship, a business, or a neighborhood, anything that's organized, if you quit caring, it does fall apart. I think right now showed that this is a start, and thank you for, again, inviting me there, but this is a start to show that there is some light left in that North End and that Hamilton does care. They felt that we are not doing anything for them. Frank Downey made a comment about Lindon Wall while we were there, and Frank said, it's taking time, you got to be patient, it's been eight years, and we're still not there with Lindon Wall. And I told him, I said, this council is a very good council. Even if I wasn't on this council, I have a lot of faith in everybody up here. For the last 10 years, I think you have a great council, and I think it's just, we work together well. We have, you know, good team, good city manager, we have everything there, and 17 Strong is a very good organization, and they care about everything that's going on. We care about all 17 neighborhoods. So I invite council, you know, to next meeting, I guess, maybe if we show up and show them our support, and they were, you know, they had every right to be, a little bit like, they were angry, but I think at the end of the night, we had some really good discussions, we had, they even applauded a little bit, that made me feel good, so they were really happy with that, and I'm hoping with working with the city that we can show them that the North End is still in our radar, and like every other, that's why it's called 17 Strong, like every other neighborhood. So, Dan, thank you, and I will be there to help. I'm going to kind of take that on as one of my projects, I think I will be there as much as I can to their meetings, and I think it's a start to show that the neighborhood cares, and hopefully we get a lot more involved, okay? Thank you again.
You know, please keep us informed when the next North End meeting is. I think there's a lot of bright lights, really, in North End, people and neighborhoods. A lot of those do take care of their property there, they're very proud, some have been there for a long time, and I hope there's a good turnout at the January 23rd public meeting about the North Hamilton Crossing, but no, there's some really bright lights, I mean that complimentary in a way, about the North End. Any other comments from council? I think we always, we always everybody a happy and meaningful Thanksgiving. Tree lighting event is Saturday.
Saturday, 5:30.
5:30. What time will the tree actually be lit up?
It'll be shortly after 6:00. We let, we let a lot of students sing Christmas songs for us, so it'll be a little bit after 6:00, and we have, we've added a couple new programs or events to the evening, so.
You're promising great weather, right?
It's going to be cold. I promise it's going to be cold, and we're going to have coffee and hot chocolate for anybody that needs that to warm up, or we have plenty of bars there if you want to get a Dora cup, too, so I promise that.
November 26th, of course, is the big game, the Ohio State University versus somebody else, but more importantly, more importantly, don't get mad at me, Ohio State fans, it's Small Business Saturday. So we have no other meetings between now and that date, so I guess I'm really power shopping again from like 11 o'clock to 11:59, because the game starts at noon, but then after it becomes lopsided in the second quarter, I might go back out again for halftime, but please, our small business folks are our neighbors, they live in this city, their employees live in this city, so we got to treat them well, shop there, shop local. As Jim Goodman says, I'm going to quote him again, buy local or B-Y-E spelled local, so. Anybody else have anything they want to say?
Joel, you want to say anything about Friday night?
Yeah, what's going on Friday night, Joel?
Well, we are now in the regional finals, we will play tip a canoe. I'm pretty optimistic, which normally I'm not, but I'm pretty optimistic, we're playing really well, and I hope it warms up a little bit. I put the oldest guy on the staff on the field when it's 75 degrees in the press box, and I'd rather be up there. We're having a great year, and I am so appreciative of everything, that all the support that we've got.
And we as Bayton.
Yes.
Yes.
7 o'clock.
It is televised, too.
I think it's on spectrum.
Channel 1, I think.
I'm not sure if anybody locally is playing it or not.
And I don't know.
Bayton's got a lot of.
I appreciate Mayor Mohler.
Great fans.
And Mr. Smith coming down to practice, you guys are more than welcome anytime, and it is entertaining, it's a good time to practice. Would you agree, Mr. Mohler?
I'll agree. I mean, they listen to you, they don't talk back much, but no, but no, you, you, you definitely capture their attention, and you're coaching them how to be better players, and they learn life skills from you and the rest of the coaches, and they're a good group of young people, academically, they're very good, and they're just fun to watch, and they really bring a buzz to this city like it did last year.
Councilmember Lauer, I would suggest you wear long pants this week. I have seen his short pants for every game this season, I do believe, and it's going to be cold.
I put the shorts and the totes and put them under the bed.
Good, I'm glad.
Can't change that. Superstitious.
Luke Platt, do pass along Coach Lauer, Councilmember Lauer, the wishes that we have on council for their success, we're rooting with them all the way.
Thank you, appreciate it.
If there's nothing else from council, executive session?
Yes, sir, for two items, please. The first is to consider confidential information related to specific business strategy or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance, and the second is to consider the purchase of property for public purposes.
Okay, regarding the economic development request, is there a motion that there's a finding that executive session is necessary?
So moved.
Hold on, I'm not done yet. I'm going to get audited sometime on this, I know. Is there a motion that the executive session is necessary to protect the interest of the applicant, Mr. Pullman, or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project?
I can go now, right? So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Time on that motion is 6:56. It's a motion we go to executive session for the stated purposes by our city manager.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Fear, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Go to executive session at 6:56, we'll come out of the meeting just to adjourn the regular meeting. Thank you.